Hello. I will now call the July 17, 2024 Planning Board to order. Role call. Thomas Thompson.
Present.
James Motley.
Present.
Dylan Moore. Cindy Scarborough.
Present.
Tamara Lipscomb.
Present.
And William Roach.
Present.
First order of business is to approve the minutes from the June 19 meeting. No one has any changes to be made. Can we have a motion to accept them?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Questions were made in second and all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. First item for consideration is a conditional zoning request for an undeveloped property located off Reed School Road, Rockingham County, pin 799410259246, with the current zoning designation of residential S-12 to traditional neighborhood. The applicant and property owner is Reed School Bowman LLC, docket number CZ2024-02. Jason.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Tonight, we have a conditional zoning application. Reed School Bowman LLC petitioning to rezone a recently recombined parcel located off Reed School Road. This is Rockingham County, pin number 799410259246, from residential S-12, that's RS-12, to conditional zoning traditional neighborhood, CZTN. The parcel encompasses an area of 63.28 acres. There is an existing single-family building located on the site. Water and sewer service are available. It remains located in the right-of-way of Reed School Road. The front portion of the lot, roughly around 200 feet-ish, is located in the city's corporate limit, while the remainder of the property is in our extraterritorial jurisdiction or ETGA. So, the traditional neighborhood of TN zoning districts was added to the reasonable zoning ordinance back in August of 2023. Most of y'all were with us then, Olivia knew though. As a floating district intended to allow establishment of pre-1940 stock compact neighborhoods with a distinct sense of place and character that are limited in size and oriented toward pedestrian development, or pedestrian activity rather, excuse me. Areas within this district may include a mix of residential, commercial, and civic units that are building close proximity to each other along a network of interconnecting streets and blocks, appropriately designed facilities for pedestrians, bicyclists, and automobiles. An applicant seeking to rezone property to establish a traditional neighborhood district must provide a traditional neighborhood plan, meeting the standards outlined in the zoning ordinance and reviewed and approved by the city's technical review committee or TRC. Reed School Bowman LLC has provided the required TN plan as required by the ordinance to staff, which TRC has reviewed, and staff does find that the plan meets the intent and the requirements, the general requirements of the TN district. The applicant is requesting residential land uses only for the proposed TN development, including single-family, the attached dwellings, attached, single-family attached homes or townhomes, as they're often called, and two-family homes or duplexes, as they're commonly called. While TN developments typically include some kind of residential and commercial land use, making it like a mixed-use development, the developer has elected to not include a commercial component for this development. Staff finds this proposal to be reasonable as a majority of the parcel, roughly around 80%, give or take, is located in the Troublesome Creek drinking watershed that recharges Lake Reedsville. And Troublesome Creek, non-single-family detached residential uses, these are apartments, townhomes, duplexes, anything that's not a single-family dwelling or a commercial use is limited to 24% built-upon area. So, that's, the intent there is to limit the impact of the development, which causes more runoff, drinking source. So, the state imposed those regulations to protect our drinking source. But, single-family homes are limited to two units an acre, so they don't follow the 24% built-upon acre limit. They're limited by density, not by built-upon area. That makes sense? So, the front portion of the lot will have the non-single-family use to the townhomes, duplexes. Mostly, there are some single-family homes in the front portion too. They're proposed, while the rest is multi-family development, which will be outside the watershed. Some of it does kind of crossover, but they're limited to 24% total built-upon area in the watershed. So, everything else that's in the watershed, that's single-family, adheres to the density requirement. Given the lot's location in the watershed, staff agrees with the applicant's request for residential land uses only within the development, since they would be, you know, subject to that built-upon area limit and the more commercial you have out toward the lake, the more runoff you're gonna get. It's actually gonna, you know, be a hazard for our drinking sources, degrade water quality. So, we agree with the developer's proposal for residential only. The developer has engaged the residents in the surrounding area and held a total of technically two neighborhood meetings over the course since this original event to discuss the proposed project. If some of you all remember, they rezoned once before to RS-12, back in 2022, I want to say, if y'all recall that. So, they did a neighborhood meeting then, and they did a neighborhood meeting last week. During the meeting, residents expressed concerns on the increased traffic from the development on the currently gravel urban loop road. Planning staff agrees that the current gravel road is not able to accommodate probably as well as it should be the increased trips that will be generated by the development. Staff recommends that the developer work with the city to find a solution to pave urban loop road that they plan to connect to it as a part of the proposed development. The office program allows property owners to petition for paving of unpaved streets. The developer can work with the community to gather the required cement of the city for consideration of paving assistance from the city up to 50%. Whenever we get a petition from residents to pave an unpaved street, the city pays 50, the residents pay 50. So, there can be something worked out there if there's interest there, but that's a program that we offer to all residents on unpaved streets. The property is located in Growth Management Area 5. This is the conservation district, which encompasses the area to the southwest of the city. The land development plan does note that GMA 5 is located in the watershed area of Lake Reedsville. This is Troublesome Creek, as I mentioned earlier. GMA 5 is intended to serve as a buffer between development and the city's water supply. However, it doesn't explicitly exclude development, and the watershed regulations exist to accommodate and, you know, development within prescribed limits. So, we don't feel that residential development is actually more suited for the watershed area. It doesn't say no development at all. So, we feel it meets the intent for residential development only. Therefore, staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2022 reasonable land development plan. Staff finds the proposed rezone to be consistent with the 22 reasonable land development plan that's reasonable, that's in the public interest, based off this report. And the planning staff recommend the proposed rezoning will be approved, taking into account the conditions for working with staff to find a solution to pave urban loop road. That's my report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I have a question. One of the concerns I have in the development, I know we need the housing in the area.
Sure.
That's one of the real pushes, to try to get housing established so that we can have and attract additional businesses. My concern is whether or not we have addressed the question of how many students will come out of this development and whether or not our school system, or the schools that we have in the vicinity, will probably serve those people. Has that been addressed as part of this stuff?
So, that's actually done all through the county. They handle all of that. We do send them our agenda packets and inform them of development. They're aware of the proposed projects that we have in the pipeline. Those have been discussed at the school board, if y'all have been following any of those meetings. So, we've been involving them with what we know is in the pipeline for development here, just keeping them involved. That's really our role. We really don't have much influence on the school system. It's really all handled at the county level. But we do our best to keep them involved for that reason.
Right, understood. I would ask one further question, that vein. I'm not, I'm not at this point familiar with how the school system is set up such that I can say that this area will be totally serviced by a specific school versus another versus another. My concern is, and I've talked to a land developer, in that he's expressed to me and shown me that in some systems that developments put together and that eventually, they end up segregating students in very narrow areas based upon a street being serviced by one school, one part of the school system versus another, you end up segregating students. Is that something that has been considered or addressed?
Again, all that districting is done at the county level. But that is bad to do that, I agree with that. That's all handled by the districting at the county. They do all the districting.
Yes, sir.
Right. Not something that the city would be involved in, but that's a valid concern.
Mr. Motley, I would tell you that, you know, I used to live in the subdivision across the street. If Ms. Roach, Ms. Roach still lives in that subdivision, but where that's, where that area is, as far as elementary school, it should funnel into McRoden Elementary. And my understanding is McRoden is able to handle the additional influx of students. After that, they funnel. My understanding is that area funnels to Rockingham Middle and Rockingham County High School. You know, those are certainly the bigger middle school and high schools in the county.
Right.
I think when you get up to the high school level in particular, students have the ability to choose which high school they want to go to based off of what, you know, whether they want to go into the backglow program or, you know, college prep, whatever it is that they're wanting to do. So, but I thought I would, based off of personal knowledge from living practically in that area, I could at least, I could at least address where they would go elementary school-wise, take it to that area.
Appreciate that.
Jason, thank you.
Jason.
Yes, sir.
I understand that, you know, it's currently zoned RS-12, correct?
That's correct.
And my understanding is an RS-12 zoning is 12,000 square feet per lot is the minimum, is that?
For single-family.
Single-family.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, so, so at least in the back part where this is in the watershed, where it's limited to no more than two houses per acre. It's actually, because 12,000 square feet is just over a quarter of an acre, this actually kind of makes the density even less in the back part. Now, the front part is going to be, could be much more concentrated, is that correct? Is that what this map shows?
Yes, that's correct. So, if you look at the plan that we reviewed, so the TN district is intended for compact development. So, you have smaller lots closer to the road, using alleyways whenever possible. Not entirely, but whenever possible. So, alleyway rules more up there, but as far as the TN district overall, the way it's proposed, so you've got a multi-family component up front and then the single-family in the back. So, they would still be pretty compact, which for the watershed, you still, taking the TN out of it, you still have cluster development in the watershed, which eliminates the minimum lot size. So, even if this was RS-12 and they did a cluster development, it would still be, it would take that minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet out of it. But, just for them to, you know, the intent is for development to be closer, not impacting the rest of the natural environment.
Got you, got you. But the average is, when you average it out, it's?
Well, it's the same amount of acres, it's two units per acre, and then, so you end up with the same unit count that you would even if you did a 12,000 square foot lot. So, it's just shrinking them together.
All right, and the other question is, how many units is this? Because I can't, I can't read the number.
You can't actually read.
177.
177 units altogether. How many of those are single-family and how many are townhome slash duplex?
I don't have it where I can read it, but it says, I think they can answer those questions for you. I think I'm curious. The developers in here will be able to answer that further.
I had a very similar question, maybe the same question. It seems to me that, I mean, I don't know how to ask that question any better, but it does seem to me that when we approved this traditional neighborhood that we had the idea in mind that it was going to be more compacted together than our typical developments in order to create like the pre, like 1940-type feel and also to introduce like corner stores, coffee shops type things. Is that reflected in this?
So, there is no commercial component to the development proposed. It's just strictly residential. It doesn't require, it's not a requirement of the district for there to be commercial component.
So, why, why is it, why is it labeled traditional neighborhood?
The overall zoning?
Yes.
Because what they're designing as far as architecture goes into the architecture too of what they're designing using the alleyways and the setbacks being very close to the road, pedestrian-oriented development. So, as far as residential goes, that's what it's designed to mean, is the traditional neighborhood design.
Okay.
It's not just for mixed use, so the intent of the TN district wasn't just mixed use. It was also just residential development built differently than what we would normally see in a post-World War II subdivision.
Right, but the concept was that people could be able to walk and ride bikes to things.
Sure, and then that's the pedestrian-oriented design of it. And we didn't put a requirement in for commercial aspects. It just accommodates that, but it doesn't require.
I don't mean this to sound as negatively as it does, but it does seem like this was just labeled as a traditional neighborhood so that they could make it more condensed.
I couldn't speak to that.
So, what other kind of traditional neighborhood things are they offering? Is there going to be like bike trails and walking trails and playgrounds and all those kinds of things?
As far as the amenities go, there is some open space that's proposed in the plan. You can see those right in the center. That's proposed to be open space. As far as what's going to be planned to be there, I think the applicant would need to answer that. I'm not aware of it.
And when we approved it, with Dylan, is that when we approved the traditional neighborhood, it was more than just smashing houses together. It was supposed to be a whole plan on making it more like a neighborhood. So, like, you know, playgrounds and corner shops and, you know, and things for people to do, and there's not going to be traffic, so people, kids can be out in the street and playing and not really seeing that.
Again, with the commercial aspect of, because this is mostly in the water.
Right, but I mean, just, but I mean, just like things like bike trails and playgrounds and things for people to do, and that's gonna be, you know, there's more to it than just smashing houses together. Yeah, so, that's why I'm a little confused too. But anyway, we'll see.
One more question for me. Is this an example or is this actually a plan?
This is a plan. So, this is the plan that's been reviewed by TRC. So, while this is not the full construction on your plan that we would approve, this is the overall design, and it's of certain changes to this plan would require council approval, which would go through planning or like reoriented. Any change of density, any change of entryway or egressway.
Right, and the alleyways are supposed, the alleyway thing is because the cars, you're not going to have traffic in front of the houses. So, and the alleyways are for the kids, for the cars.
Yeah, it's so that in the front of the house.
Because these pictures are just pretty normal. I mean, but the garage is going to be back behind, and the cars go in the alleyways, it's safe.
Yes.
For people to walk and ride bikes and kids to play, right?
And the intent, yeah, you keep the front yard without the garage room for some things, when possible.
None of these pictures have that. All right.
Any more questions for Jason?
One final question.
Yes, sir.
As it's laid out now, if this board approves it, what latitude does the developer have in changing the plan? I've heard you say that anything like this, any change that would effectively have to be approved by the councils, is that correct?
Certain changes. So, if there's a change in use, like if they go to a different land use, density, increase in density, change in density, relocation of the entryway, those, all those things have to come back to council. There are some minor changes that staff can approve that don't go to that level, but that's kind of just site design, not really, not density or use or anything like that. So, mostly not, well, really what you see here is, all of this is the full design of it, yeah.
The diversity of the housing stock here, is that something that's solidified that's not changing, right?
The?
Like how we have?
Elevations and?
Oh, no, just like, well, yeah, how tall they are and, you know, like townhomes versus something that's, I have different examples here.
Are you talking about like the elevation design?
Yes.
Okay. The elevation designs of what they design has to meet the intent of the traditional neighborhood district. So, that's the intent of the elevations, is to see the kind of proposed development. So, that's, while that's not necessarily fine, that that is supposed to be like the kind of design that would be built as a part of the development.
Yeah.
But as far as building height goes, I think that's included in there. I think it's smaller, I think it's up in that box to the right, the maximum building height. I think maximum building height doesn't exceed 35 feet. That's our maximum, and I don't think it can exceed 35 feet. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think anything does.
Any more questions for Jason? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak for or against? Do they need to sign up all at once or something?
Oh, good, I'm Whitney Hodges. I am the applicant, or part of the applicant team.
Could you please state your name and address?
Yes, it's Whitney Hodges. 13A15 Cent of Our Place in Huntersville, North Carolina. It's Vegas. As you know, this is where our site is. Jason has kind of explained some of what we're doing, but I kind of want to answer some questions that I heard about why using, why we want to do a TND, why this place, because we were a part of those meetings about the TN, the TN ordinance. So, one of the reasons, the TND style is really how we develop. The design concepts that are in your pocket and that I'll go through, those are actually homes we have built. So, that is why we wanted to show what we do, so that you have that to know, this is the types of homes. One of the reasons for a TND is to be able to provide that diversity in housing that you're talking about. This is a conditional district rezoning, and that means that the plan that we show you is the plan that we built. And so, one of the reasons, meaning the conditional note about urban loop road is because through that neighborhood meeting, some really great conversation came up, and we really want to be able to address that in a meaningful way. But to be able to provide different sizes of houses, we think will be an asset for Reedsville. And to be able to provide some houses, like you will see some front-loaded garages in our design examples, because there are some. You're kind of in the back where the larger lots are in the watershed. But then, really the component of that TND development is making it pedestrian-oriented, so meaning that the streets, there aren't as many conflicts with cars, like people backing out in the more kind of compact areas, as you would put it. Because there are townhomes, duplexes. One thing I would like to clear up from the neighborhood meeting, is this a pointer? I'm afraid I'll turn it off.
Clicker, you can click.
Okay, but I can't point. Okay. So, up in the top right, there are two lots right there that back up to the Holcombe property. The front of those is actually a green. I had this very much confused. And they will enter from a driveway in the back, so kind of like a private alley from the back. I did not get to those questions as timely as I wanted to this week. I've had wheels on my feet, so I've been in two, three different states. So, just kind of saying some design things. But when it comes to commercial, one of the things that we have learned over time is you've got to put commercial in the right places to be successful. And we don't want to put commercial haphazardly and it not be successful. This is probably not a place that commercial would be successful off the bat. So, we wanted to make it commercial, or sorry, residential. Knowing that you have this ordinance in place, and one of the reasons that you had voted for the ordinance in place is so that it could also be used for some infill, and that would be something else that would be available. So, in some of those smaller infill projects, you can, like, that might be more appropriate for commercial, that is where you would want to do it. We had some struggle, like in some of our projects that, you know, we have the commercial in, and that's something that we have learned through, through being 25 years at this business. I myself have not been here the whole 25 years. I'm a little gayer than that. But the, but that's, again, that's one of the things that we have learned. Do you have some specific questions for me of that, maybe I can answer that maybe Jason couldn't? Because I have an engineering team here as well, so if you have some of those questions, because those did come up in our neighborhood.
I guess what I'm confused about is that it looks like there's roads everywhere. And like, so a kid's going to go out and play. I thought that the alleyways are supposed to make it so that it's more pedestrian.
They do, because it, because they will be, they are, we need to make the alleyway functional. So, it needs to be able to function for movement as well as if it needs to function at any point in time for fire access or anything like that. So, we've worked with the Reedsville Engineering Department to make sure that those things work. The other thing is, as someone mentioned, it's talking about the kids at play. The crosshatch are kind of our formalized open spaces. The color one might be, I'm going to say, I've got a color one. There we go. It's my, ah, this is a little busy. But the crosshatch areas, those are kind of the more formal open spaces. We are keeping the house that's on site. It's not historic, but we like to use that kind of like as a clubhouse and a gathering space. But there's also 16 acres that are undeveloped. So, they're staying that way. This means that we are able to provide 30% open space, which is part of the, is helping for the watershed, but also allows for those kind of maneuvering trails, that, you know, they're nature paths and ability for, you know, the fun times that youth have back in the woods. So, but when it comes to how the street is laid out, I think that, if I can, one of the things that, when it comes to streets, when you put trees between the street and sidewalk, it gives a, it kind of, it closes the street, one that that makes traffic move a little slower. I don't know if you've ever noticed how you maneuver when there are cars on the street, you go a little bit slower. Nobody wants their rearview mirrors back up. As well as, if you put the tree trees between the sidewalk, that also gives kids and people a safe places to walk that are not within the street. Does that help answer your question? Because I'm not just going to say that they're playing in the alleys necessarily.
Well, yeah, I mean, I've seen houses like this when I lived, developments like this in the way they're in Chicago, and the cars, the streets for the cars were behind the houses, and then in front of the houses was, there were no cars. So, when you look at the front of the houses, it was all just like for bike paths and walking. And, and then the cars moved behind the houses and parked in the garages underneath the houses. So, that was more what I was visualizing, but this is just pretty much, I don't see how it's really that much different than a regular neighborhood development.
Um, there is, I think the one big difference is that, yeah, you're, one is sidewalks and two, for here, not Chicago, but for here, a lot of things are front-loaded garage, like the driveway comes in from the front, whereas this, the driveway will not come in from the front. It'll be, most of this will be from an alley.
Right, that's what I, that's what I was thinking, but there's still roads in the front too. So, there's roads in the back and roads in the front. Cars, there's going to be cars back in the alleys and there's going to be cars on a road in the front of the houses too.
They don't have to park there, like, but they do, but that's how you get to your, yeah. It's not a courtyard style where it's complete green space in the front. The only, the only two would be up in the corner that would be the courtyard style.
Are these sidewalk roads and alley roads, are they the same size?
No, they are different sizes.
You know, the, like, two or three?
I'm going to let an engineer answer that question, but, because I have trouble reading. But your, the pavement width for the alley is 16 feet, and the right of it is 24. This is the top. And then, we have two sizes of residential.
Okay. Does, um, does anyone have any more questions for Amy?
Whitney.
Whitney. I wrote it.
So I asked Jason, how many of these are going to be single family and how many are going to follow the duplexes?
Sorry, so duplexes, I believe are twenty. Um, the townhomes are fifty-five, fifty-six, sorry, got one off, fifty-six, and single family is a hundred and one.
So majority of this is single family?
Majority is single family, and this map, the colored map shows the sizes of lots. So we're trying to really vary those lot sizes so that we can provide, um, just a difference in housing prices and some options for people. Because the idea, the other idea with T and Ds is as you build them, if you like your neighborhood to be able to stay in your neighborhood and either upsize or downsize.
How big are these houses going to be?
But then, I mean, a lot, it's a weird thing to say, but the townhomes, and correct me if I'm wrong, but um, townhomes, I think are somewhere around like eighteen hundred to twenty-four hundred square feet. Um, the houses that we're thinking about usually are in the, um, if we have a super small lot, then that would be somewhere around twelve hundred square feet, um, upwards of, I want to say thirty-six hundred square feet. We've really done it by lot size, not by like house size, so.
But that's, but on the biggest lots, you're looking at thirty-six hundred?
So something, it, it can go up to that depending on like, because it'll be two stories, so that's where.
I got you, Jennifer. Y'all want to build the houses first, or y'all want to give folks the option to, to pick and choose what it is they're putting on these lots?
Typically, what, I mean, we likely will end up selling to the builder. Um, we work with builders and we put in architectural requirements for different builders, um, and that's part of what we have, you know, farther in this package, um, of what those stuff look and feel kind of styles of what we kind of require out of developers to do. We don't want to leave, we don't, we don't want to do, we don't want our name attached to something that we don't really like. Um, so some of it, some of it's in the eye of the holder, but just some different ideas of what houses with alleys look like, houses without alleys. And these are, like, the ones with alleys, those are from a development who's had the trees able to grow for twenty years, and that really does make a difference. Um, this is in a part of a neighborhood that, um, it hasn't had a chance to grow. I took these pictures in the winter, so you really get to see the houses. But this is, you know, some ideas of what our townhomes have looked like in the past, um, as well as, oh yeah, there's a light, oh yeah, townhomes. That's where we're starting with this one. And some duplexes.
These are actually your projects?
I didn't pull the moss away, I promise.
I don't know.
We've done enough that we can, we can actually pull from our own projects.
We'll have to select the builder, is that correct?
We would have to select the builder. We have not, and I would be very honest, we have not done that yet. We, what usually happens in the development process is that you need to get your, I hate the word entitlements, but entitlements done, so through that rezoning process in order to say, you know, hey, we've got this project.
We call it getting your ducks in the rug.
Yes, getting our ducks in the rug.
I have a question. Um, you've given us the information about the square footage for the various units. Can you give us an idea of what kind of, based upon your projections at this point? The build, build out time for the whole subdivision? It's going to go in phases.
It is going to go in phases, and, um, what I said at the neighborhood meeting is what I hope to be true. But the earliest I think that we would, because we have to get through this process, um, and this is a very, like, hands down, not as complicated as others. So a couple of months with the rezoning process, um, and then we need to do construction drawings. And typically that takes six to eight months before we can even pull like a grading permit. Um, I would anticipate that the construction of that would be somewhere between eight months to a year for the initial starts. For the initial, like, the initial phase, like getting the construction started with roads. This is my engineer who would know that a little bit better, but I'm kind of running off. So I wouldn't say the first house would go up for somewhere around eight months to a year. Yeah.
I mean, for, for development like this, um, we're going to bust out into multiple.
If we could.
Name and address.
Name and address.
This is, uh, my name's Tim Shaw with Hagan Engineering, um, located at thirty-eight, five-nine Battleground Avenue, Greensville, North Carolina. Um, and yeah, um, you know, a project like this, we're planning to break into multiple phases, and so it really depends on what their builder's timeline is. But getting through construction drawings could take six months to a year, so then that would be just to start construction, and then a build out for this kind of project could take, you know, eighteen months further. But the phasing of that would depend on the builder, depend on a lot of factors. So we're not really at a point where we can answer that, but it, you know, it could take eighteen to twenty-four months for complete construction. Um, we don't really know yet.
One additional question. Do you have, can you give us an idea what the price mark's going to be for those properties at this point, your projections? Can we not ask that?
That's Nate's forte. Um, because I think it would depend on market conditions and what that would look like in Greensville. So I couldn't, I feel very, I did, I said, I said numbers at the neighborhood meeting, but I feel like they're meaningless. So I don't really have a very good answer to that one. Um, but in other markets, I would say that you're looking at somewhere between like low twos, high threes, somewhere in that range when it comes to like, maybe starting with some of the townhomes. And then the, the single family, just depending on timing, can go upwards of there. So it's not the, it is not as cheap as we would, like, it's not as, at least less expensive as we would like to build. Um, but prices of things have gone up around the country.
Any questions for either one? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak for or against? Hello, please state your name and address, please.
My name's Bill Hopeen. I live at twenty-five oh eight Reed School Road. Um, my property, my joint's this property down on the northeast corner, I guess you'd call it, my face Reed School Road. I just noticed too that, uh, my drawing that I have, colored drawing, y'all have changed it. Because now it's become all townhomes, is that right? Is that what I'm looking at?
No.
Not here and here?
Yeah, but that's still in.
The, the colors?
No, it's still, it's just a different size of, um.
Well, my, okay.
This is just a difference. So this is from a, the size, so the size, I cannot do it fast. Nine thousand to the pink, to seventy-two, so the lot size has just changed a little bit.
So all of these townhomes now?
No, that's still single family. They're just, the lot size changed to a little bit smaller. Yeah, they're still single family. These, they're all still single family, it's just the lot size moves a little bit.
We probably should have had the same colors that you people were looking at, but anyway, we'll go from there.
It's okay, it's too small for me.
We can't, we can't, we did it all. Don't they be also literature, we can't. This is like, it's, wait, we can't, it's too big.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, good evening. Uh, appreciate this opportunity to speak to you on this property, and I, I don't know, you know, you said for or against. I think right now I'm against, especially after some of the things I've heard tonight, but some of the things that, uh, I just want to clear up and speak to, because you not only represent the growth of Reed, you also represent the citizens in this area. And, uh, you know, earlier this property was already, we've already been through the zoning process. It was owned RS twelve, came before you, came before the city council. So the property owners out there, Mr. Bowman, nice fellow, his staff is really good, Ms. Hodges, everybody works, talks to us, we meet with them, and they, uh, do a good job in, in meeting with us, but, so the neighborhood's out there waiting for houses to be built, RS twelve. We had no idea about this till about two weeks ago, when only the property owners that touched the property had a letter from the city. My wife and I came up and met with Mr. Harden and, uh, discussed that, and then all of a sudden, they let us go out again and go out to more people, which they should have to begin with. But when you're sitting there waiting for what you thought you had, what you knew had been rezoned RS twelve, and then you get a hundred and seventy-seven units of all, of three different kinds, you know, I'm a pretty good guy and I support Reed, but I don't like things crammed down my throat either. And that's kind of the way it came across. And so, and talking about the, the open space, I think you noticed on the back side, you got a gas line going there. So the gas line itself dictates setbacks in areas, so I imagine if the gas line went there, you'd probably see more units in this planning. But, uh, anyway. I noticed also that across Carter Ridge Road, Carter Bridge Drive, I talked to the partners about this, uh, the DOT only allowed one entrance onto Reed School Road, which was across from Sunny Chris Drive. Well, I happened to notice, you can't help but see it, those two little open boxes right there right across from Carter Ridge Road. Wonder what they're for? Wonder why they didn't build something there? You notice that? And also, I was told when I talked to the planners there, that all of the units on Reed School Road would face Reed School Road. And when I look at this, uh, I don't think they face, all of them face Reed School Road. And it just happened, the ones that don't face Reed School Road just happen to be on each side of that little white area that's right across from Carter Ridge, which to me means that later on, someone's probably going to try to petition DOT to let them have another intersection. You can't get out on Reed School Road now. I can turn around, I used to go back out. I used to go back out, but you can't do it now. Don't believe me, try. And, and I asked for the traffic count, if it, if it increased any from the RS twelve, something to the, uh, traditional neighborhood zoning, and I didn't, I hadn't gotten that, that answer yet. That's probably one that you probably need to know. I would like to know how much a hundred and seventy-seven units is going to increase the traffic count on Reed School Road, but I've asked for that and haven't gotten that answer. You know, I'm, I'm not one, I've always been a supporter of Reed, lived here all my life, supported them, rocking them down. And, um, but this, to me, when I look at Reed School Road, if you'd asked me what a traditional neighborhood was, I'd say I live in it, houses. Houses, not, not, not this thing. And, um, and I, and I've looked at, at some of the work that Mr. Bowman has done, it's very nice work. I don't have any problem with that, but this just doesn't fit Reed School Road. I'll, I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, can you clarify for me, um, for the RS twelve, what was the size and lot?
Did anyone have any questions, Bill?
I do have a question.
Sorry, I forgot to ask.
Were you able to address your question to a specific person who might be able to answer? Because you did post a question, and, um, I guess I'm looking.
I think we need to keep all questions directed to the board, just for, so things don't get out of hand.
Any of the questions that I, that I have, Ms. Hodges already, already has them. So she, I just haven't gotten a response yet, but she's talked to me, and we, we're on good terms, I think. And, uh, you know, I like to support this, but it just doesn't seem to fit Reed School.
It seems like your two concerns are traffic and, and, and in, in, in and out of the neighborhood and density of the neighborhood and type of housing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I'm hearing, making sure I hear your concerns.
And also the way it was handled. There was a lot better way to handle this. Do you know, you started, you started, you approved this what, a year, a year and a half ago, as RS twelve?
RS twelve, yeah.
And we didn't know, and then all of a sudden we get a letter two weeks ago, showing us this? You don't think, they did not set very well with me. And I've been in a business where you need to be open with people. And, and this, uh, how much, RS twelve with these houses, how much work do you think's going into this with your staff here? And we didn't even know. We sat out there on reason, we didn't even know.
We got it.
They don't know either.
You knew before we did.
It took a while to develop.
Bill, Bill, I have a couple of things I want to, to address. First of all, uh, the city of Greensville didn't even have a traditional neighborhood until twenty twenty-three. So that was, so when they first petitioned us, that wasn't even an option that was available. And just trying, just do a little math in the, in my head, and this isn't accounting for the fact there's a gas line right away. But if we left it as RS twelve, technically we could have somewhere between two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-five.
That was my question.
Lots, that that would fit inside an RS twelve. Now, the watershed, of course, would, would reduce that even further, but
It wouldn't be that much different.
I'm not necessarily sure that it would be a huge difference.
That was what I was.
The difference may be townhomes, well, and, and duplexes. That, that may be, that may be, of course, a different color there, but I, I just wanted to, wanted to know that, you know, we didn't have that option to look at to start with. And, you know, I don't, I'm not sure that it's like miles off from what an RS twelve development would look like.
Well, I'll just, I'll answer your question, Mr. Thompson, with this. Go back and look at the minutes of your meeting and see how many units were stated to you that would be in an RS twelve, and then, then talk to me.
There wouldn't be any because it was, it was a straight rezonance, there wouldn't be a unit count in the plan.
Right, right. I was just looking at, I was just looking at the general acres and how. Check your minutes. We'll talk to Mr. Bowman, because I know when we were talking, and all the folks went and sent and met with him, and I can tell you, but I'll let you look it up. A whole lot more than it was going to be in RS twelve. Anything else?
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Can I ask you again, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to respond to a couple of those concerns. So as far as the notice goes, when the proprietors were notified, so North Carolina statute requires the, a body of ownership property owner to notify for the rezoning. So we notify by practice everyone who backs up to the lot. Uh, that's just ours, because really when you get, go and pass that, where do you draw the line? You know, do we, how far do we go out from that? Do we draw arbitrarily? That, that's been our, because we want citizen involvement, but we've stuck to that because we want to be fair to everyone. And like, how do you judge how far to go out, you know, as far as who to pick and how far to go out? So it's fair to just stick to the general statute, in our opinion, to meet that requirement. So we sent out the first notice, the second notice was from the developer for the neighborhood meeting. And I think they might have gone a little bit further out, which that's their, you know, their option to do. So they have only voted beyond, so that was, that was great. As far as the, uh, the unit count and the amount of houses you would have had in RS twelve, the previous rezoning was a straight rezonance, there was no site plan. It was just going from, I think it was originally RA twenty to RS twelve.
Usually there's like a sheet that gives us what, like when we're, we're doing rezoning, it usually, there's a sheet in here that gives us like what.
Well, we didn't have any plan to look at, it was just.
No, I mean, like it says what is included in each type of permitted uses in each zone.
I think the plan basically included specifically what was going to be in this one.
But I mean, like what are, what are, comparing it to an RS twelve.
So with RS twelve, you'll be looking at, uh, single family, uh, townhomes are allowed with a SUP and duplex, duplexes are allowed by RIDE. So basically it's the same types of development, really. It's similar. The main difference between the two, between this plan and RS twelve would be basically the lot, which given, keep in mind, there would be a cluster development, even if they did it under RS twelve. So there would be smaller lot sizes, that takes out that aluminum lot size that I mentioned before. So there would still be linked to two units an acre in the watershed, and on the front side, outside the watershed, it would be, uh, your standard sizes. But, uh, really as far as the land use goes, it's, it's compatible with RS twelve overall. Um, it's all residential. Now, there's a commercial element, that'll be a little bit different with this plan. So, because this is all residential, we, it is basically the, just the, the design is overall different than what you might see in RS twelve.
So with it being traditional neighborhood, is, is that all we're talking about?
So with it being traditional neighborhood, is that all we're talking about? Is the design of the neighborhood itself?
The design, the.
Is there anything that the traditional neighborhood is allowing that RS twelve already doesn't?
So, well, they're bound by the plan. So the plan binds their project.
That's what they have to do this way.
Even though, they have to do it this way. So even if they went, if you look at the overall TN uses, I mean, we allow commercial uses, we allow institutional uses and residential, so it's overall, it allows more uses, but they're limiting themselves to these uses by the plan.
Gotcha.
So they're locked in with the conditional zoning. So you wouldn't see a commercial element, like I said, any change of use would have to come back before Plan Board or Council. So that's why, as far as consistency goes, we don't see, the planning staff does not see an issue with it. But that's just our opinion. And, see, I think there was one more question, oh yeah, traffic. So as far as traffic counts go. So that's a part of our construction planner view process, if there's a TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, that's required during construction design, we would require that to see if there's a, given this is DOT right of way, so keep in mind that's a bit different, because we don't have jurisdiction in that right of way.
When would that analysis be done?
What's that?
The traffic analysis. When would that be done?
That would be, if DOT required one, because it's in DOT right of way. So that would be up to DOT, because it's going into their right of way. So we don't have jurisdiction in that right of way, because it's not ours. That's why they get to call the shots on where the entryways are. That's why they cut off the north entryway, because they didn't want that to have a, them to have a second egress way onto Reed School Road.
So is that little white spot that Mr. Holcomb was talking about, what is that?
That was formerly an egress point.
Like former one?
Yeah, it was originally designed.
It's gonna be abandoned?
Yeah, from my conversations with them, that's been blocked off because DOT did not allow them to have a second egress point onto Reed School Road at that location.
I've seen the same.
You go ahead, go ahead.
So what we're gonna do with it is, we're treating it as green space, it is shown on the plan as right of way. So if that needed to be an entrance, it can still be an entrance, but the intent is it to be just a green. And just because in traditional neighborhoods, you kind of want more connections versus less. But that's, that was kind of our design thought process through that.
So you have one main entrance off of Reed School Road?
Yes.
Then you've got these two.
Two connections.
And then Price Acres.
Yes. We need to keep, five or four, we have to keep two, for the number we have.
One concern is that, you know, I mean, I know y'all working on potentially the Urban Loop Road, but from what I know about Price Acres Road, it's a small road, not designed to handle a lot of traffic.
Well, from what I understand of the Reedsville process, that some of those questions actually come up in the construction phase of this development, past the, whether it's a land use decision or not. But I don't know that as a developer, that we would be required off-site improvements. I think with Urban Loop Road, there is some, like, there's some concern there of how that connects, and you know, should it connect? Like, we need to still look at that. But that would be something I would think that Reedsville would also want to address when it comes to what Price Acres looks like, and how they handle, like what that looks like. But it is a public, the good thing about connectivity is, you know, it gives people different ways, both sides. So if the people that are in the existing neighborhood want to use a different road, they have an option to use a different road. Overall, usually more connected places have less issues with congestion, so that's.
Well, a safety issue too. I mean, more entrances you got, the safer it is.
I'll just do it right here.
Was this what you referenced earlier, that you were gonna try to address in a more meaningful way, is what you?
Yes.
That was this issue?
Especially Urban Loop Road, because that was a big chunk of our neighborhood meeting. And I did notify larger, because I wanted to notify who everyone I thought might be impacted. So I went out a little bit farther and notified all of Urban Loop Road, because we were connecting into it. And I notified kind of the top part of Prices Acre and then the Carter Ridge, that first row. But yeah, that's what, we want to make sure that, because what Jason and I were getting into was trying to negotiate something very quickly. And I don't think that's a very meaningful way to negotiate something for a town, for a city. So we wanted to make sure we had some time with it, and that when we went to council, who, and they're responsible for, kind of, they are the guardians of the budget. And so, you know, to make sure that we had that done for them, so that you guys could focus on the land use issue.
We have a swing back here.
Yeah.
I just wanted to address your concern about the DOT and the traffic. We have had conversations with them, and that is what triggered the removal of that secondary connection. But I did want to bring up, while TA has not been required by DOT yet, at this point, they are requiring that road widening to be done on Reed School Road. And that's what we are showing at the intersection across from Sunny Chris Drive. So it's gonna add in a right turn lane, as well as a left turn lane into our development. So obviously, that's not a save all, but it's gonna reduce a lot of the traffic that's coming in and out of this development, not congest that road further. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone here for or against to speak also? Or do you want to speak? Okay, your turn.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the other one had pink uniforms. May I give this to him, please?
Sure, and if, when you get back to the podium, please state your name and address.
This is concerning, Urban Loop Road. This is what's missing from this map right here.
Jason, do y'all have, oh yeah.
Needs to be remedied. Both entrances. I'll explain it in a second. Sorry, I'm nervous. Make sure to give him a copy, because you got one for the, for the, okay, thank you. My name is Brandon Barnes. I'm at twenty-six zero seven Urban Loop Road. Currently, we live in Reedsville on a dirt road. It is ragged, Jason, to that map that you're looking to right there. And it's basically ash with gravel. I'm offered the expansion of Reedsville and its tax base. Need to look at our own infrastructure to support the amount of development. As this kind of undertaking will take considerable time, the residents of Urban Loop Road will be forced many times to take Country Lane Road, which is on your map, to get to Business Twenty-Nine. As a retired logistics operations manager for flatbed freight and for obvious observation, observation, excuse me, Urban Loop Road and its entrances, every school road and that at Country Lane will have to have considerable road upgrades. Yes? Has anybody been up that way? No, but try and get a flatbed through there. It's gonna happen. A fellow neighbor told me that he requested this for us, but that the city of Reedsville told him we had to pay for half of it? Is this correct?
Let's refrain from using hearsay, please.
I'm sorry, sir.
Let's refrain from using hearsay. If that person is not here to speak, let's leave that out, please.
I think Jason answered that question, I mean, his.
I'd be glad to clarify that, if I may. So our urban, our unpaved road program is offered for residents who live on unpaved roads. And so it's offered by city policy, so if fifty percent of the owners owning fifty percent of the street frontage on an unpaved road, petition to have the street repaved, the city will pay fifty percent of the cost. And then the owners bear the other half of the cost.
Okay, and that happened and failed?
I couldn't speak to that, I wasn't here, I wasn't there.
We're talking about getting this paid now, no? Right? Isn't that what we just, what we're saying?
Are you talking about the previous attempt at it?
No.
Just now.
But now we're going to be paying.
It hasn't been submitted, so that's what our recommendation was, that the developer work with staff to, if they're gonna tap into it to improve the road, through that process, through our established process.
But that has to happen, right? Or is it just?
Isn't that, isn't that the conditional thing?
We're looking at two-tenths of a mile of road that's gonna be used.
But I thought that that was what the conditional was about, was.
It is, so the condition on the zoning is that the developer will work with staff to, I'll piggyback a bit.
So this road's gonna be paved, in order for this to happen?
They agree as a condition to work with staff to pursue options to repave Urban Loop Road if they're gonna tap into it.
Can we, as, can we say that?
It doesn't sound like it.
Yeah.
Voluntarily accepted by the developer with a conditional rezoning, so just keep that in mind.
Well, okay, but when we're approving a conditional rezoning, we're saying that that condition needs to be met in order for it to happen, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So if the condition before, and if it's approved with that condition, then in order to build the project out, they have to meet the condition. However, it's wired.
So we, as the planning board, can word that as we so choose, correct? What we approve.
With the consent of the developer.
We can, well, we.
Be negotiation between the city and the developer, but it has to be voluntary.
Come on, continuing out with you. Continue. This dirt road that you're looking at here, it's paved twice a year. And I'm not even reading off this anymore.
Great.
Great. It's steamrolled and gravelled and regraded and all this stuff with, for all I know, it's coal ash. It's so fine, we don't even bother to wash our cars anymore. There's no need for it. Now, with that being said, I stopped that man on the steamroller and I was like, who's the contractor doing this to the entire road, city of Reedsville? He said, I don't know why they even, why they don't pave it already. Do you understand what I'm saying? Now, they're gonna use Urban Loop Road. I can guarantee for their building products to be brought into this neighborhood. This needs to be addressed yesterday. I can't half-breathe after living here for a year and a half. I would like for y'all to consider that. Please, Urban Loop Road, please pave it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably that'd be more of a council thing, wouldn't it? For paving.
Well, it'd be like I said.
I mean, of course, we make a condition.
The condition, they would use the petition process with fifty percent of the owner.
That's been the thing I'm really confused about, what we're gonna be approving.
Yeah, because that's, that's not something, that's not something that, unless it's a condition that they're voluntarily willing to meet.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I understand.
We don't have any jurisdiction there, right? You know, I think TND for being here today, I'm sorry, I'm not meaning to.
No, it's okay, we're trying to figure this out.
They just said that it would take, what kind of process timeline are we looking at here? That would give it time, the pavement to cure. It would be perfect. We could do that this summer.
Help us out, Wendy.
That's all.
So the reason that the condition is written "they," because I think what you would like to do is tell me, tell us what you would like. And we, and we, it's the way the statute is written in North Carolina, I used to be a planner for twenty years, so very familiar. We have to agree to it, and what we can agree to right now is that we will work with staff to get either, if, to work out what needs to happen with Urban Loop Road, whether that be, we don't connect to it.
Right, that was my, I was gonna ask you that. Are you definitely going to be connected to Urban Loop Road?
If we connect to it, then we, then we need to, then we, as a staff and the developer, need to come up with a solution. Because I completely agree, like we both, we agree with the neighbors, that that is not necessarily a condition that we would want to impose upon anyone with a gravel road and there being connections to it. And I feel very strongly about that one, and I think I can, like, I feel, Nate feels strongly about that one too, so. But it's really more like, do we, you know, is this where we need to connect and how that looks? Because we also want the opportunity to know what Reedsville wants that, if that road is paved. It's not always just about paving what's existing, but also making that existing pavement safe. So, because you are gonna be adding more traffic than what is just on that road with this development, right? That's an obvious, I think, to everyone. So, you know, working within that right of way, if there are things that over time have been planted in the right of way, you know, what that might look like. So we want to kind of be, and that's why I'm saying we want to make it meaningful, and be mindful of how that looks. And so we want to take a little time to study it and make sure that it's what everybody wants.
You need to have two entrances, correct?
Five or four, with the number we have to, Prices Acre would work with the, and then the entrance to Reed School Road. So we could have it that way, without connecting to Urban Loop Road. We would, I mean, there's a tenant that we're like, well, you know, to connect in, so we want the option, so I think that's what we would like. What we would like for you guys is basically, if you feel as though that this type of development is something that you would like to see in Reedsville, to recommend, and go to town council with the condition that we continue to work with staff in the next three weeks to come up with a solution. That's what, kind of our note, how our note is written.
I'm not hearing the word pave the street. Is there a reason why we're refraining from?
No, I mean, if we were gonna connect, then we would have to, the street would need to be paved.
Okay.
And we would use the petition process, which is that it would be fifty percent non-Reedsville, meaning us, and then fifty percent Reedsville.
Gotcha. So that's the part that y'all need to work on?
Yes, because how we engineer, that may look different than what is, what the structure of the road is right now. Because I think that if Reedsville went out and paved it today without a development, they probably would just pave the road and maybe redo the ditches a little bit. But if, if they look at it and they say, well, we need to even expand it a foot, you're changing those ditches. And if you change those ditches, you may be looking at, if there are trees in the way, if there are fences in the way, the things that people really love about their homes.
Is that written, the motion's written to reflect that?
Yes.
No?
It's not. It's still, it's still.
It still applies. The condition, even if you vote to recommend it, so the condition is on the, so if you recommend it as written, then that condition carries forward, because you're recommending based off the application that was provided to you. So you don't have to incorporate that condition into it. It carries along with it.
Anyone here for or against to speak? Gene, did you want to speak?
My name is Gene Arthur. I'm at twenty-six oh four Urban Loop Road. I have, it's basically a big part of the south border of the property. And I echo Mr. Holcomb's concerns. We were told a hundred and thirty houses, and now we're getting forty-seven more. That kind of, it's kind of, that's a lot of difference. Yeah, we're kind of, kind of okay with that, and we kind of accepted that. We talked to the developer, and that was, that was kind of our thoughts going forward, and now it's one hundred and seventy-seven. And also, according to the gentleman that spoke earlier, I am Urban Loop Road, and it is a mess. It has a, like a bank curve when it goes from. Um, it has a, a, like a bank curve when it goes from, like, east-west to north-south. And it would be a lot of, 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 uh, work to make that kind of work out. And I think it would take a good bit of the road frontage of some of the, the residents there. I'm not as concerned because my house is further back off the road, but there is a lot of houses that are fairly close to the road. There's one in particular next to me, I think at twenty-six oh six, that is very close to the road. And, and it's got several trees. It would be a problem too. Like he said, and, and the people on urban loop road, they're gonna have that force down their throat that they're gonna have to have a, a, you know, a road paved. And I just don't think they should have to pay for it. And once again, I think the developers should, you know, kick in that because it, it is a big part of, of what they're doing and what they're gonna be using, a big part of their development, so that's...
Urban loop road, it's a state maintained road, is that correct?
As far as I know, the city seems to maintain it. Like he said...
Urban loop is city right-of-way, sorry.
It's city.
City, it's a city street, yeah. City maintains it.
It's our, the part we're on, we, is in city. Now, across the street is county. And it's like they can't decide who's supposed to pave the road.
Two different...
Man, I need to, if you would like to speak, I need you to hop on up and give your name and address. Let's be respectful. Do, does anyone have any questions for Gene? I, I, I do, if I'm understanding this right, um, it seems like the property owner or developer or whoever will be doing something with this land regardless of what we decide today. It seems that if we did go back to R-12, they would still try to maximize the number of units. And I say units because it could be apartment complexes. It could be far more compacted, um, than this.
Not on, not on R-12.
Townhouses and duplexes.
Yeah, R-12 will, R-12 would allow two places.
Right, I'm just...
The, I guess the eastern part of the property, because that is the part that's not watershed. The watershed part would...
Yeah, I'm just giving an example. I know it's not that way now, but it could be, um, at another time. And for this project, it looks probably the less dense than it probably could be. I'm just, it could be a lot worse. And especially the need that we have for housing, um, it could be a lot worse.
I understand.
I'm not saying it's bad, but it could be, it could be. Any more questions? Thank you.
May I say one more thing?
Sure.
As, uh, I heard a comment about annexation, so, uh, for urban loop road, there is a side of the road that's in the county. So it is city right-of-way.
Is that what she mentioned?
Yes. So it's a one side of the road, the western portion is in the county, eastern side is in the city. So, but it is city right-of-way. It's just, it's the line dividing us in the county right there. So, as far as, there would be no, so North Carolina more or less outlawed involuntary annexation. So cities cannot involuntarily annex anymore. So as far as concerns on annexation, uh, there, there is no involuntary. It would have to be voluntary. So there, there shouldn't be any kind of fear over involuntary annexation.
Could we get her name and address just for you, so that you have?
Can I get your name and address, please?
Uh, Marjorie Bartley, twenty-six oh seven urban loop road.
You said Bartley?
B-A-R-T-L-E.
Just so all of that will look real nice in the minutes, even though it's messed up. Yeah, Bill.
Just a point of clarification. My wife keeps, keeps scrupulous notes. So it was a hundred and forty-four units was the max that was gonna be placed in the RS-12, twelve thousand square foot lot homes. And with a maximum of a hundred and forty-four. And it came, it did not come in this meeting, came, we met with Mr. Bowman at, uh, Covenor Church.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't approve it based on that. We didn't know that. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, but what is in there? Is it? We approved that RS-12, well, I was approved RS-12 with no drawing. And from the point it was approved, now that it was RS-12 from the point it was approved, we're working on another plan that takes a different zoning. We didn't even know it. Citizens, but the citizens that live out there didn't even know. It would've been nice, like I said, you know, you just don't cram things down people's throats. That's, that's what makes it difficult for us to get things done sometimes. And if you're talking about, we need housing, I know we need housing, but if you start to count how many you've approved in the last year, it's coming to reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against? Going once, going twice, three times. Any comments from planning board members?
I think I, I have just one comment. It's, um, and I know I've heard, and we know that there's a big need for housing. And I've seen it with growing. I mean, it's just, it is that time. It is what it is. But I know we've had several, there've been several proposals of different developments, um, in different areas of town. And nobody wants them. You know, people complain about, so what do we, what do we do? That's just my personal, I mean, we have to bring housing, we need housing in Reedsville, but nobody wants, nobody wants it in their areas, let's be, in their backyard, you know? And, and not just like you all, you know, because I don't live in that area, but I know that area. And I'm down Reed School Road a lot, so I can definitely, I can imagine it's gonna, you know, things are gonna, things are gonna progress, things are gonna change, traffic, things of that nature right now. Of course, we wanna accommodate. We don't want driving the fight. Like Mr. Holcomb said, you know, he used to get back out of his driveway. Now, you know, you gotta think about it twice, but it's just, I've heard a lot of people state that we don't want it. We want it, but we don't want it in our backyard. And it, it just makes it, it makes it hard for, um, myself sitting on this board and I'm, and I can't even imagine, you know, with the council. Because they have to make the final decision. But that's just my point of view, my two cents. Absolutely. Definitely hear both. I understand both sides of the coin.
I think that progress is painful. And my big concern is traffic, because I live in that area. And Reed School Road is not a very big road as it is. You're talking about two hundred more families there. That's a huge impact. So I'm just interested to see what the traffic assessment would be.
If we, I think that we've done this before, where we held it off for a traffic study. Is that something that will be done by the time the council makes the final decision?
Well, technically, I think closed discussion, but I guess I can still respond since you asked me. So again, that's DOT right-of-way. So Reed School Road, we, we wouldn't have the jurisdiction to...
We don't have the jurisdiction.
Require them to provide a TIA because it's not our right-of-way. So that would be all to DOT.
Right. But, so they haven't made a decision to do it at all?
From what I heard from their engineer, it sounds like DOT hasn't required one yet.
I think it says that we're going to expand to have non-turning lanes.
Yeah, they're gonna put a left turn and a right turn into the, into the neighborhood there.
I think, um... Yes.
I don't think they would do that as they're constructing, as they're constructing the neighborhood. Yeah. They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna need those turn lanes for the construction.
Um, I think I am inclined to support it. I feel like this was a lot better presented than some of the other ones that we have had. Um, not saying that it's the best. I would like a little bit more from it. But it is better. And I do feel like they have done their homework. And I feel like this looks like it is done in good faith. I will tell you that in the past, when they have had these meetings in their neighborhoods, the concerns were brought up. And then, okay, thanks. And it still went along as planned. Um, I do know that they have took some of your concerns and tried to remediate them. I feel like they're doing all they can. Um... So I would say this is one of the better ones that I've, I've seen in my however many years on the board. So, so it is, it is getting better. I'm thankful for that. And I think we've, we're known to be sticklers on this board and try to hold people to a higher standard when they come to us. But, um, so that, that's, that would be my basis for it. I hope y'all would all concur with that.
I do appreciate that there has been some compromise. That's been my issues in the past, um, with some, some of the proposals. That there seems to be some evidence of compromise, and I'm very happy to hear that.
And they listened to the...
Yes.
Yes, they listen.
A lot of them that we've seen, they didn't even talk to anybody in the, in the community. Well, Mr. Chairman, on that note, um, I will make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning. The approved for the specified parcels to the requested zoning district, which is traditional development neighborhood, based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda packet, submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporating to the motion to be included into the minutes with the condition that, that the developer and the city meet together to try to have, hammer some sort of solution out with, with the urban loop road. You think that'll work?
I mean, it's implied by the conditions, so I would think that...
Okay. Who seconded?
I seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. It was unanimous, I believe. I wasn't looking.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And this is a recommendation to council, so please, you know, if, if you feel like you need to speak further with council, you know where to find them.
Thank you.
Hey, folks, we do have other business to get done, so if we could take it out to the lobby?
Come on. Yes, sir.
Okay, next item for consideration, rescheduling the July UDO steering committee meeting. We just got it. We just need a motion to move it to that date. Okay. I'm sure they have, but I can't remember. Thank y'all.
All right, so let me look at my calendar here.
What was the, what was the proposed new date for the meeting?
What was it?
Thirty-first.
Yes, got it. I did, but I moved it.
Awesome, thank you.
Toes and eyebrows in here.
Can we have, strike that from the meeting. Can we have a motion for that date, please?
For the, for the strike or for the?
For the date.
Drew's is still at five.
Y'all, they record these now.
I make a motion that we move it to July thirty-first at five.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries unanimously, I believe. Um, director's report.
Uh, not too, too, too much to report. So the items went to council last month, especially use permit for the personal service was approved. Uh, so was the, um...
Some kind of zoning for regional equipment?
Yeah, regional equipment, that was approved as well, yeah. Uh, so all those were approved. Nothing much else to report. We haven't had a lot of new businesses. Still waiting on, uh, the apartments to pull their building permit out of Holiday Loop. They've been doing site work, uh, but we're still, as I know, waiting on, uh, that. But they are working, so it is happening, so. What was it again? The apartments on Holiday Loop that they're building. So, overall, yeah, uh, not, not much to report this month. You know of anything true?
So I saw some work over at the old Golden Corral building.
The Blue Roof, yeah. It is.
It's not a...
I'm here to state publicly.
Mr. Mayor.
As far as we're aware, as far as staff is aware, it is not an IHOP.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have to, you're in on the IHOP controversy.
I have a conversation with one of the managers at, uh, Mayflower. I told that particular person that I've received thirty-plus calls about.
Twenty-eight angle here.
Steakhouse.
He has someone on Facebook.
Hispanic restaurant. And they told me that it had also been mentioned that it might be a nightclub or something to that effect. I said, "Will you please tell me what your direction is right now?" And they said that they're considering a steakhouse at this point.
Oh.
But that's just a consideration.
What can we, what can we do to get them to consider it even further?
That was my question also.
Might be what it's gonna be then.
But they are working on it. They like to have my office in them overnight.
Yeah, free weight.
Okay.
Where the Jersey Mike's is in that little shopping center, and then there's the one over there.
It's right there.
Yeah.
I, I've just been watching the conversations on social media with amusement. I, I have, really don't have, I don't have any opinion one way or another.
How many calls have y'all got? Several, just several?
I redirect people to, um, attend the planning and zoning board meeting. You want more information? Every, we meet every very Wednesday at sixteen. Cut it off right there. Now, I did get a, I did get a, um, and I know the maintenance is still, I did get a message from, I get messages from different people because they know we're planning, we're planning zoning board. But, um, and, and I told him it may be a regional downtown corporation, um, question or the chamber. But I've gotten several record, several messages about Cafe Ninety-Nine, that building. And I know, you know, with Dave's passing, I mean, I think, I know things take time, but have you heard anything about?
It's, it's, I, I've heard. It's, it's gonna be, I'll, I'll tell you.
Okay.
That sounds like...
And I'm interested in, like, I think, maybe putting a business there.
Out the world.
And I just told him I would ask.
Who was the owner of that building?
Dave.
I figured, but.
That was a big boss downtown.
Is that, I know we moved in, I guess, to our comments, but are you, it's good. Um, I do wanna add, that gentleman there had trouble hearing. Do we have hearing devices or?
Now with our new, uh, media system, we have, uh, hearing assistance, things that tap into the mic system. So they have to, you know, we have a sign right out front outside the council chamber.
Oh, really? See, I didn't know, but that would've been, I would've told him. I'll, I'll remember that next time.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you know.
He might've been embarrassed he didn't want us to... Embarrassed, he didn't want to.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean, and I should have asked him this question, I'm sorry. Once the, the projects are just approved from council, do they have a projected start date?
I think what the engineer was saying, I mean, they're looking at like eight months to a year for construction drawings.
That's right, that's right. Okay, then, so we're.
Yeah, and then the, you know, the builders, so I mean, it might be a little bit of a, I mean, it takes time with larger.
Sometime next year, okay.
Does the city go after those people and get them to set it all up? Like, do y'all recruit those people?
First, to do residential projects.
Well, them specifically, because they looked familiar.
Yeah.
They approached us.
Really?
They got the zoning, they did the rezoning to the R-12 first, RS-12, and then they came and did the presentation on the, the community, the.
Yeah, I know.
That's why we've seen them a lot. And that's why we've seen them so many times.
I was just wondering if it's like the same group that y'all reach out to or they're just?
No, we don't, we don't reach out to any, but planning does not, we don't function as like a recruiter. Now, our economic development, our new marketing and economic development director, they do recruit for industries, developers, that type of thing.
Yeah.
But planning, we're reviewers. We don't do outreach to developers because we're a review authority towards the city's ordinances and state law, so we don't really reach out to developers. We just review things when they come to us.
Exactly.
That, that's part of it and it's an ethical situation too, so we don't do any of that outreach in our department.
Also, oh, sorry, go ahead. I didn't know we had a technical review committee. How long have we had that?
Recorder.
No, technical review committee.
Oh, well, we've had that for a long time.
Oh, really?
It's staff.
It's staff?
So technical review committee, every city has a technical review committee, which reviews site plans, we review, now we're getting more conditional zoning, since that's, that's one thing, I guess, I kind of spearheaded since I got here was.
Technical.
Additional zoning, what the general assembly allows for cities to do with conditional zoning. So we review, like I said, site plans, it consists of planning, I serve as the chair of the TRC. It's just, it's kind of just an informal committee kind of a staff. Some cities are more formal, where they'll have actually open meetings and they'll vote and stuff. We're more of just, we're informal, some cities are less formal, there's no requirement, it's just your own policy.
Yeah.
So it also consists of public works, they review for utilities, water, sewer, includes engineering, so they do stormwater, stormwater calculations, that sort of thing. It also includes the fire marshal, reviews for fire code, includes, the building inspector or building code administrator is also included on that as well, just to kind of review, because every now and then with like commercial, you may have a, like ADA parking showing up on the civil plan. They don't usually comment that much on the civil plan, they get more into the construction drawings, but.
Gotcha. Would it be possible to have someone from the planning board to be on that committee?
It's a committee only.
Can we change that?
Not that I'm aware of, as far as, it's just staff only, because we review for technical things, not for, you know, it's more for city staff, it's not for appointed figures to be on. So we don't have anyone like, no one from council, no one from, it's just technical review staff to review for compliance with our established ordinances and codes, technical professionals.
Yeah. I do know that the county planning board has selects a person every year, or however their term is, to be on the committee. I just think it would really help to have one of us there during that.
I can ask to see if that's something they're interested in, but I don't know, because we've always, it's been staff review, it's meant to be kind of an independent review of just technical staff who review application projects.
And those are not meetings that are scheduled. We receive, you know, site improvements things on a rolling basis. So you, we're reviewing six things every single day for a week, or you can review nothing for a month.
Because all of our site plans are staff approved, so some cities, you know, they'll take Platts and things to council, that that's been an old method, but increasingly you're seeing cities do more staff delegation, which we've done for a very long time, staff approval only for, for technical things. But whereas land use, things like this, you all see it when it comes before you for a land use decision. The planning board makes a recommendation on it, council makes a decision on it, but for technical aspects, that's reserved for staff.
If you'll ask for me, whoever needs to be asked. Because I think that would be a very good educational part for not only myself, but other people on the board. I know, you know, everyone's going to be on it, but I think it would help for us, especially. I think that'd be good.
Any of those men on the Depot District?
We've had the one, you know, the old Adams Electric Building that they were interested in, so I think they're working on, we've been reviewing plans from them to, they're going to renovate the metal building.
Okay.
Use this co-working space. And they're also going to build a parking lot on the vacant lot next door, so we've been reviewing that plan.
Okay.
So that has been submitted to the, to the TRC that we've been reviewing, so that's where we're at right now with it. I don't think that they've moved entirely onto the brick building yet, they're focusing more on the metal building to start with.
Okay.
That's in the pipeline.
We, did, did you also ask about putting like the little monitors here, like the ones that are on the TV, like?
I can ask and see, I'll see what we can do, because they're, they're pretty small to see these. See what we can just make it more visible.
But also, I hate, well, I don't think it's even on there, but I just, I hate having to, there's so much paper and stuff, I don't, I don't like that.
It's kind of a lot.
I mean.
Well, plastic anyway.
Yeah, so, but I would also like to have it just in front of me.
Okay.
Gosh, I guess that was it. I don't know how it typically is in, with other settings like this, where the public comes up and speak, but I think I would prefer to finish letting them speak and then have you come afterwards, just so there's not like a debate thing that happens. If you could just let me know that you want to speak and I'll get you up there. Probably at the end of all public discussions, just so we don't waste time going back and forth and then that, you know, everyone jumps in.
Anyone else has raised their hand?
Yeah, and I, and she probably wasn't intending on speaking, but I think that would just help writing down all the tensions, even though that wasn't too contentious, but just.
Because first American signs.
Yeah.
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 More pleasant than others.
Any more comments?
Nope.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I second things? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, y'all.